Hello, everybody. We've already called the meeting to order, so we're at the part of the agenda where we're going to rise for the pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, there are no special recognitions. There are also no additions, corrections, or modifications to the agenda. There are no citizen statements. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Wednesday, September 10th, 2014?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Nine point zero resolutions, there are none tonight. Ten point zero communications. Calendar of meetings. The tax rate hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 30th, 2014, at 6:30 PM at Central Middle School. Following the tax rate hearing, the regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. An anticipated closed session at 6:00 PM. Board liaison reports. Does anybody have anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I had the pleasure of attending the Mosingo percussion competition over the weekend, and I enjoyed watching all the high schools perform. And I wanted to give a special mention to Kristin Gummerheimer from South High. She won an individual competition for the maroombas, and I'm so proud of her. So yay, Kristin.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, I attended two meetings of the bond committee, and I'm just impressed with how well they're organized and what they're working on and working through, and how careful they are to make sure that things are separated from Parkway, so that Parkway does what it's legally can do, and then the committee does all the rest that it can legally do. And they're just so well organized, even have a lawyer there who quite often speaks up and lets them, and gives counsel to them on how to handle things. It's moving along very nicely, and I'm very pleased with how Bruce and Ed and everybody else are working together on that committee. And we're very hopeful that the end result will be what we need.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll just report that Mr. Jacob and I attended the Stu Cave Parent Night, Monday night, at Central High School. It was introduction to parents to get to hear Mr. Cave and somewhat of the message that he gives to our students during assembly time at each of the different schools. And I was very impressed and very supportive of his coming back to the Parkway School District. I think his message is absolutely wonderful. He gives it in a way that's very connecting to the students. And there was actually a student there who asked his mom to please go. You've got to hear this guy. When I mentioned it to my son, he said, wow, you're really lucky, and that's really cool. So, very proud of Parkway for bringing him in and quite impressed with his presentation.
Thank you. Keith, or does somebody want to say something about last night?
Yeah, we had a great experience last night. Parkway sponsored the United States Marine Band, also known as the President's Own. What a marvelous band. I mean, these guys, they looked the part. They are impeccable, not only in their dress, but in the way they present their concert. Everything from the John Philip Sousa type of marches, they get your blood going, and people were tapping their feet to it, to the Jimmy Dorsey type. What a fantastic saxophone player. I mean, that guy, if he's not on a record somewhere, it's unbelievable. And it was just inspiring, I guess would be the best superlative, and you could apply all of them to these guys. And there was even one member of the band, a trombone player, who is a Parkway Central grad. And there were about five or six other grads from the St. Louis area, so they really have a Midwest influence there. Anytime you can see this band, it's well worth it.
Dino, it was awesome.
And Tom Applebaum was there, too.
And just to give some credit to Parkway staff, certainly Paul Tandy, Doug Hoover, and Jeff Lackey need to be complimented for their work to get this all coordinated. And wonderful turnout from the public, and so, wonderful night.
Great, thank you very much. Subcommittee meetings. There's a Project Parkway quarterly meeting, the first of the year, next Monday, September 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at South High School. And the first TLA subcommittee meeting of the year will be next Tuesday, September 16th, at 3:00 PM at ISC. There are no board subcommittee reports yet because we haven't had any meetings. So now we're going to move on to 11.0 action items. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September 10th, 2014 board materials.
So moved.
Second.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Good, then we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Twelve point zero, there are no action items tonight. There's no policy review. And we have one fantastic report. Call on Desi Kirchhoff to come down and talk to us about Project Parkway. Oh, Desi, I'm sorry. Before you start, I think I noticed some students in the audience. Do we have any students in the audience? Do we have anybody?
They're hiding back there.
I see you guys back there. You've got to stand up and tell us who you are and what you're doing here.
I'm here for... What school?
Umsul?
Yes.
Welcome. We're glad to have you here. You guys back there?
Um, I think we're...
Are you guys all from Flow Valley?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, welcome. We're glad you're joining us. Okay, Desi.
Good evening, President Feldman, Board Director, Dr. Marty, and Secretary Stover. Glad to be here this evening. We need to pull up the... We're going too fast for our guy back there. So, a couple of my colleagues asked me to make sure I keep it short this evening, so are there any questions? Okay.
That was good.
Five thousand comedians are out of work in here.
Meeting adjourned. Drive safely. So, I'm here tonight to give you an overview of some of the year's work. The good news is, when we... A lot of this is things you are very familiar with, that you have heard, and so there's not a lot of newness. So staying focused and connected to the work we've been doing, and staying on the track we have been. So this evening, a little bit about the agenda, just a quick, brief background, some of the things we touched on back in our retreat and with our steering committee meeting, a quick glance at our accomplishments and our current work, an overview of our current structures, and a little bit of information based on our survey that we took. If you recall, you, the board participated, and all our administrators and steering committee participated in a survey regarding kind of all aspects of Project Parkway. And so we'll look a little bit about the feedback we received from the steering committee, and then do some highlights of our goal areas, which you will receive detailed reports on throughout the year. So just going back a little bit, and you can see our old logo up there. Back before Project Parkway started, in May of 2008, we looked at our current reality, and I'll quickly talk about the findings that addressed the need to engage in Project Parkway. Our C SIP needed to be a long-term, continuous plan, so we were really out of compliance with where we needed to be. Our Board of Education goals and focus areas needed to be more measurable and more specific, and we needed a systemic process to involve our community. So that was part of the deal. If you remember, that was our mission from 2000 to 2010. And as we engaged in the work, we really worked with Grant Wiggins. It made sense. We were working on our curriculum with understanding by design, and so we used schooling by design and worked directly with Grant Wiggins in three major areas. That we planned backwards for mission, which I think we've done well, when you look at how we've adopted and accepted our goals, and confront and close the gap between the vision and reality. That was our subcommittees and our needs assessment at the time. And then, one thing that we have done a little bit of, but we probably need to keep working on, is from the start, know that we may have to adjust the plan along the way. We've made some adjustments all along the way within our action steps, but no major look at some of the big issues. That's when Project Parkway evolved. So our new governance process started in 2009. If you remember, we had almost 400 volunteers at our first meeting. We didn't know what to do with everybody at first. We had the 30-member steering committee that started to work on mission, that would lay the foundation for our work. And then we had 30 subcommittees, eight task force going work. And overall, once we were able to get our mission and vision out there, we'd certainly start the plan backwards from that. Additionally, some of our goals were to go beyond compliance when creating a plan that would be dynamic, with tangible results, and that we would have a system of ongoing collaboration, and a system to help us make decisions moving forward. And so that led to some of our action teams. If you were... Everybody, hopefully, this looks very familiar. And I can't think of an organization that I've seen around that quotes and uses their mission to guide their work better than Parkway does. Part of that led to this slide that you've seen a few times now, and we kind of seem to add to that quite frequently, but some of our major accomplishments over the last And then some of our ongoing initiatives. And so, a lot of these, in the smaller print, it's really visual for you to look at and say, we've still got a lot moving through Project Parkway right now. And so, a lot of these initiatives you will hear as we go through the year in goal reports. That's how we structured our work. You remember our placemat, how we've organized and tried to make sure we have a system in place to actually have action teams address our goals. And everything runs down from the goal areas at the top. The structures and leaders, most of the people in this room are a major part of Parkway project, Project Parkway, and moving the work forward. Members of the superintendent's action team have been assigned each goal area. And then our structures, we move through our district action teams, our quarterly meetings, steering committee, and our advisories. But what we have to do, and this is getting back to the point at the beginning that we needed to think about, we plan with a plan to adjust the plan along the way, so we have to ask some questions. And that was part of what we were looking at when we decided to, it was time to kind of do at least a survey, to touch base with our leadership group, to see where we thought. Are we still headed the right direction? Do we feel comfortable with where our goals lie? Do we still like our mission? And overwhelmingly, the good news is, everybody still likes their mission. So we worked with these essential questions as we developed the survey. To what extent does Project Parkway foster continuous improvement? And to what extent has Project Parkway moved us to achieving mission? If you remember the survey that you took, and many in this room took, it was broken into actually six sections, but the last section was open for comments. But the six major sections focused on our mission, vision, learning principles, and commitments. The second one was on the communication and strategic plan. Third, structures and practices. Fourth, we're on our goals and measurable objection... No, objections, objectives. And then Project Parkway leadership. Just taking to the survey, when we combined all the survey results of the groups that took the survey, which was not an extraordinary number, and I just, as a reminder, the survey was really not to necessarily drive decision-making, it was just to touch base and get feedback on kind of where our leadership stood. So we had a very strong showing, and strongly agree or agree when we talked about our mission, vision, learning principles, and commitments. And again, in the leadership of the organization, that would include the steering committee, the board, and Parkway administrators, strongly agree or agree, over 93%, categorized it as strong. So some areas we wanted to look at a little bit that didn't fare as well, they still had, but they had more questions about them, or needed more information categories, were some of our Section 2, 3, and 4 areas. So that's what we really focused on when we met with the steering committee, so they could review some of the comments and feedback on that. So when we met with Project Parkway Steering Committee a couple weeks ago, we took them through the data protocol and took a look at what they had seen in the data, and so we asked them for some feedback. And so there were some themes, and so we tried to pull some of those themes out for you tonight. And some of these themes can guide the work of the steering committee throughout the year now. So, one of the things when it came to looking at feedback on Section 2 and 3, the steering committee wanted to ensure that quarterly meetings are meaningful and relevant. And I think some of these go back hand in hand, because maybe we're not getting the right audience, because people either know or don't feel like it's relevant to them. So they recommended to recruit new membership involving more stakeholders, recommending specifically more teachers and parents become involved in our meetings. Some of our feedback indicated that we were administratively heavy at our Project Parkway quarterly meetings. And then with the advisories, and also program evaluations, and our breakout structures to clearly explain the why, the purpose behind why they would meet and need advisories. And so we also went over, took this information and shared it with our Project Parkway leadership team as well. Getting into, looking at our goals and measurable objectives, and again, this is some of the work that will need to guide our steering committee work throughout the year to possibly review and revise some of our goals and measurable objectives. More focus, sometimes there's questions, we have 19 measurable objectives, there's questions that come along with that. Is that really, can you organize and measure those 19 objectives? Also consider elementary and middle school benchmarks. A lot of times when we were hearing from our steering committee, when they would look at Goals 1, it seemed very secondary and high school oriented. And then use, if we're going to have the dashboard, use and communicate the work of the dashboard. So, knowing that Project Parkway is a dynamic plan, that's where the work of the steering committee will be guided this year. Along other things that will always keep them informed and updated along the way of current progress on work and goals, but they also wanted to reconsider some overall goal areas. Example questions to possibly consider would be, should Goals 1 and 2, Capable and Curious, be more united? In other words, should Capable and Curious, are there action teams and work teams doing some similar work that maybe need to communicate more and combine those goal areas? Another consideration is Goal 4, Strong Professional Communities, really talking about our professional learning communities. Is that culturally embedded into Parkway's development system enough to be incorporated into Goal 5, which talks about professional learning? So those are some things that I think we'll ask the steering committee to work on and wrestle with. And then also, review and possibly revise the measurable objectives. So some of the questions, two of the key questions that came out of steering committee work is, do we have the right measurable objectives? And do our measurable objectives reflect all learners at all levels? Also, we worked with the group, and actually, we made a revision. We had some proposed topics for the year, and so we did some flip-flopping based on the steering committee feedback. We actually had Google apps up there in September, and it was suggested that we get out in front of the intruder training and get that out to our community sooner. So we did make some modifications based on our steering committee feedback. But if you take a look and remember the structure of our quarterly meetings, we usually have one major topic, and then our breakout sessions for the second part of those evening meetings. So our four major topics, intruder training, we'll have an update on Prop S starting next week, Google applications in November. In February, that should read Spark, right, Jennifer? It's up there. But the experiential learning opportunities. And then in April, talk about our elementary feeding and grade back. So in other words, we're looking at a new reporting system for elementary grades. And so that'll be major communication throughout the year for our schools to our parents. Okay, to move into some of our goal areas, I want to quickly give you a highlight. Good news on this one is, Dr. Lisa Meredith has been steadfast in saying, we are staying the course, and we are doing the same work and carrying it forward that we were working on last year. So you will hear that theme. What changes in the underlying structures of Project Parkway in our strategic plan are the action steps. So the main areas are sticking the same. Looking at Missouri learning standards, our common assessments, implementation, and I just mentioned that one of the big focuses will be the elementary, but the grading and feedback and reporting practices was at the, our meeting, the district action team meeting just this Tuesday, and that's also moving up into the secondary. So there's a study group looking at what it will look like in middle and high school as well. Also, the continuation of the creation of rigorous and relevant learning experiences. Already mentioned Spark as part of that opportunity as well. And support the progress monitoring interventions in the classroom and our collaborative teams. So looking at Goal 3, which is led by Dr. Chelsea Watson, our competent learners, we'll continue working on our character ed compasses, also making sure they're part of our curriculum, our character education related policies, and really, when we start talking about some of the related... Our discipline policy this year. And I know when Dr. Watson gives her report, she'll talk to you, you'll hear terms like restorative practices. And so we're looking at doing, looking at discipline in the real form of changing some of our approaches to how we handle student, for lack of better terms, discipline over the past. And then also, one of the other big moves will be to work on the character education survey, so we have client surveys and bully surveys. We're not going to try to add another survey. I think the idea is to, and I think, replace our current survey that we have, and also allow a little bit of flexibility to the schools to add to that as well. Sort of like we do with the graduate survey, have a base set of questions that we put out there, and schools would have an opportunity to see if some of the things that they're doing are working, get feedback from their communities. Goal 4, professional communities, we're going to stick with this PLC thing. It seems to kind of be becoming a pretty nice deal, you know, and I think in Dr. Marty's most recent Leaders Bulletin, was that, that was today, wasn't it? Leaders Bulletin acknowledged the work of some of the professional learning communities, our collaborative teams that he witnessed this week, and really, this practice, I think, when I go out and visit, you hear from teachers they can't think of working any other way anymore. So, but we'll continue training our leadership on the successful implantation and supervision. And also, Liz Morrison and certainly the Platte team continue to work on developing capacity building. And what that, one of the things is a monthly news letter and a website with the updates, but also developing our people, our collaborative team leaders, our instructional coaches, our math facilitators, progress monitoring coaches, and our professional learning action team members, too. So really, really branching out. So I've got to give Liz a lot of credit for developing a strong system to build capacity in this learning community. Thought out from almost six years ago now to where we are today. So, looking at Goal 5, Amy Joyce will be doing the, most of the work in supervision of these opportunities, but have kind of bold-faced the areas to really think about. You've been updated before on adding the student growth measure added to the teacher and administrative goals to collect baseline data this year. Also, there's online evaluation and full implementation for operations in our certified staff. And then we've, they've expanded professional learning opportunities for our operational staff. Some of those actually come on the late start days as well. The Artisan Teacher is a publication that all our new teachers, coordinators, principals, and instructional coaches receive, about instructional practices that will be studied this year. And also, several people with Amy are working on Pinterest boards to take a look at how to use... We're finding out, I see a couple head nods, and I think I heard this right, that this is, we're finding out that that is one of the main areas where teachers go to find resources right now. And so I think I could probably say, Lisa finally said, if you can't beat them, join them. Let's work on this, and so we can take, you know, people could find out if they're effective, how, what practices will help them move to exemplary. And then finally, in conjunction with our assessment and progress monitoring team, looking at how to add curiosity to the evaluation. Finally, our Goal 6 area, which is led by Patty Bedborough. She's certainly jumped right in, doing a great job, has been wonderful to work with. I'd say that about Amy, too. She just doesn't happen to be here at night, so... But we know Patty's in charge of the money, so...
In charge of the budget.
She's going to review our current budget planning process, try to develop flexibility in reporting, and additional accounting, and work with Amy Joyce to maximize our personnel utilization and enrollment projections, and really try to tighten our personnel up. Review of accounts, review of our systems, and our payroll payable and benefits and purchasing process, really kind of looking at what are internal controls and audits that we can have to make them more efficient and more effective. And then, a big one, there's been a part of Project Parkway, I think you all have heard, Facilities 2020, over the last several years, where just, we had a great system for collaboration and bringing the community onboard with our staff to develop a plan to bring forward, proposition. If all goes well in those endeavors, we'll have to work on the sale of those bonds and execution of that sale. Again, you will receive some detailed reports of these throughout the year. I think that's been a very good system for our board to just stay connected and really stay focused on the goals. Sometimes we would have reports here and there on different things, but certainly, I don't know that we ever had as much focus on what we identified as our goals and measurable objectives. And throughout the year, you'll receive those reports. So some closing thoughts, just quickly. These kind of efforts take incredible teamwork, and we really are fortunate to work with an incredible team of people and incredible community here in Parkway. But I wanted to show you just a quick little video about some examples of teamwork, and see if we can pull that up, Ben. So I think that's the kind of support we have in Parkway, too. People really pull together, no matter what the circumstances are, and just do a great job of teamwork together. So with that said, we do have most of our goal leaders here tonight, so if there are any questions, we'll open it up to the board. Again, you'll certainly hear the detailed reports throughout the year for each goal area.
Not everybody looks as good in the buzz that Desi carries, but...
I don't know if everybody said that, or heard what Chris... Can you say that a little bit louder?
Not everybody looks as good as De... No, I'm not going to say it again.
Let's focus on the "looks as good."
I just had one comment, really, rather than a question. I was really impressed that for the character education, not only what we're doing in the school... schools, but actually, several of the bus drivers have been involved in character education. I thought that speaks to our mission of all, that we take it right down to the bus driver, too. And they enjoy it.
I think our goal areas have stretched. I mean, it's, there's not groups, it's an organization. And that's really what it's about, creating a culture of learning.
I really think that's what we were most worried about at the beginning. How do we get everyone to buy in? And I think it's working.
Yeah, and you remember the early conversations at the Steering Committee where we talked about that. How does everybody see where they fit in this organization?
I just think it's great that we have it to refer to. Whenever we have questions come up of why we do things, now we have an answer because Project Parkway studied it, and this is what we came up with.
Absolutely.
Isn't it nice, too, that we have some consistency in the leadership of Project Parkway, that we don't have people abandoning us after a year?
I'm not sure no one's recruited me. All those others got recruited away.
It's important. I think we got wonderful leadership of the district, but in going to some of the action team work, I think it's also amazing to see. I was at the meeting the other day, Desi made reference to assessment and grading and I think there was at least, what, 40 to 50 people that are working hard on a very important... And that's been some consistent, but some people have joined us in new roles as well.
Very strong.
Well, the other thing is, the way Project Parkway is structured, it's not that it doesn't matter who the leadership is, but it matters that it's structured so that leaders will change over time and the work still continues, so.
Yeah, that's been evidenced.
Whoever set that up, good thinking.
We had a very strong Steering Committee, and I would say the community, too, because everything that the Steering Committee brought forward was received with feedback from the entire community, so.
I'll just say, too, I'm a huge supporter of Project Parkway and have been involved in it since the very beginning, and that was one of the things that prompted me to want to help the district more. And I just, I, too, would like to see more parents involved. And at the next Project Parkway meeting on September 15th, there's going to be some working groups on math curriculum and the middle school evaluation. And so, I'm just hoping that, you know, we hear comments and feedback, and now it's a prime opportunity for people to come out, participate in the process, and know that the message will be heard. And so, I really strongly hope that we do see more parents participate in the September 15th meeting, for sure.
Thank you.
I think a lot of the coordinators are here tonight, and I know they've made efforts to go back to the existing members, but also challenging all of them to bring new people as well. You know, that's, you're right, we wanted to get some new voices and new ideas in the room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see, work session, there is none. Call for special meeting, there is none. Our next scheduled closed session, anticipated to be on September 30, 2014, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0 recess, 20.0, may have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. And it is 7:35.
Pretty good.
Pretty good. Liz likes that.
Two in a row.
Yeah, yeah.